On the motions and second agenda of the thirty second of thirty, April twenty second, twenty twenty one.
Um.
Our second. So second. Any discussion? And we take a low call. Anna Freeman.
Aye.
Agnes Gendinges.
Aye.
David Malcolm.
Aye.
Eric Benegas.
Aye.
Eric ten eyes motion carries. Alright, absolutely. All the attendance will be led in the battle ages to the planet by the one crook, Eric Benegas. Please stand and place the wire. Put your hands over your heart. Ready, be there. Alright. I have to make sure, do they have any comments? Some big comments?
There are none.
Okay, look at look the, the item is the report. We received the report providing an overview of twenty twenty to twenty twenty one. Our USP learning continuity and attendance plan. Have the mission please.
Perfect, thank you very much. So this evening, this afternoon, we are going to be presenting the current school year, twenty twenty one. Uh, learning continuity and attendance plan. And as the board will recall, the LCAP process changed due to COVID. So um, we are going to be reviewing the twenty twenty one, our current school year, which is a continuation of our last study session. The doctors of Laura, as well as Ryan Cup and Laura Rivas and Rebecca Rodriguez are going to share some more information so the board have a full picture of the twenty twenty one school year. Before we begin the launch of the twenty one, twenty two planning for the LCAP. Doctor Zamora?
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. And as was just stated, tonight, we will give you an update on the twenty twenty one continuity of learning and mitigation of running loss. As you recall, due to the impact of COVID on public schools. The Senate Bill ninety eight required that local school districts develop a one-year learning continuity and attendance plan. And as was just indicated, we gave you an update on that on our plan. On March twenty fifth, which included our current instructional approach. Our current schedules for virtual classroom, as well as the professional learning for twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. The strategies for providing academic support for our students and strategies for addressing the whole child. We also included updates on how we provided support to parents and guardians. So that our students would have a very comprehensive program during the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school. Starting in twenty one, twenty two. The school districts are required to resume the implementation of the local control and accountability plan, the LCAP. In preparation for this, educational services has started to gather feedback from our stakeholders. So that we can begin the process of writing our draft. So this year, during this current time, we've reviewed and collected feedback from our stakeholders. We are also going to share with you tonight some of the outcomes and next steps as we draft our plan for the twenty one, twenty two school year. And our next slide, and this is a very familiar slide. Here we show you our timeline. This is the same timeline that we follow every school year. Where in February and March, we gather stakeholder feedback. In March and April, we begin drafting the plan for the following school year. And in May, we bring that plan to the board for public hearing. As well as uh, making sure that we can answer any questions and move forward with bringing it to board for approval in June. And this year, board approval will be requested on June ten. On this slide here, you can see that we've done a very comprehensive uh, job like we do every year. In making sure that our stakeholders are part of the process. We have met with the superintendent's council in February and April. We also met with our D lab in February and May. We had students who give us their thoughts. Uh, this year we did it on Zoom, but it was nevertheless very informative as to what our students are thinking. We had those, um, we did a survey in the fall and we provided the opportunity for them to join us in focus groups this spring. We also had open community meetings in March. We had two of them, they were very well attended. We met with our association, um, our Roland Association of Educators. And we also had a presentation to our California School Employees Association. As well as our LCAP council meeting on April, in April and May. This year was very exciting because we added a new tool to our process. We added thought exchange. And this is an online feedback tool that allowed our participants in the previous slide meetings. To give us feedback in real time. Everybody was able to see the comments that were provided and they were also able to rate the comments. So if one parent said that their student really benefited from tutoring. Other parents were able to see that and maybe weigh in on if it's something that they also believe was very uh, productive for our students to have. So this um, tool provided real-time communication amongst all of the participants. It was very exciting to see. And our parents were giving us, um, there were two hundred and thirteen participants that were able to use this tool. We had two hundred and ten thoughts and thirty five hundred and sixty ratings. So if there was a thought that you agreed on, you were able to to weigh in and say, that's also something that I totally, totally agree with. So one of the reasons why I'm sharing this with you right now at the beginning of the presentation. Is because in the next section, Dr. Rodriguez is going to share with you some of those comments, some of those thoughts. And some of the ratings that that were very um, very common across the stakeholders. So uh, very exciting year. I thought it was amazing to see it online, see it live because you could see it, it was almost like if you can imagine. A web that kept connecting the thoughts. So if they were common thoughts, they were being connected live, you could see them being connected. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Rodriguez, who's going to share some of these comments with you that were highly rated. Good evening, board. Tonight, I will begin with the key themes addressing what is working. Through the focus groups, surveys and thought exchange. We gathered information from all stakeholders that Dr. Zamora just described. To inform us on what is working in the areas of where we can improve and in the areas of where we can improve to move forward into the next year. To mention a few of the positive changes to the virtual classroom stakeholders remarked on the communication through parent square. It is a platform that they would like to see continue. Stakeholders in general appreciate the streamlined communication. The additional parent square. Has served as a positive communication tool where stakeholders felt informed about what is happening at our school sites. Our district and events in general. Stakeholders also felt that the online tools were consistent. Because the applications purchased were available to all schools district wide. Another positive remark was around the distribution of books and learning supplies to all students. And finally, stakeholders appreciated the opportunity to address additional support through small group instruction. Some of the recognitions during the virtual learning from stakeholders listed the hard work that has been provided from our teachers. This includes connecting and caring and making extra effort to connect virtually to students and our families. Teachers implemented new strategies to support student learning by adjusting instructional instruction for the virtual classroom. Teachers also used mu- multiple modes to stay in touch with students and parents. And finally, teachers engage students in small group instruction to reteach concepts and checking for understanding. To extend the positive remarks from the virtual learning experience. Stakeholders felt that our USD provided a robust support for the whole family in general. Examples provided included the Family Resource Center where families can get information around health and safety. Parent training and support in the academic area, social emotional support and tutoring services. Devices and tech hotline were parent, where parents felt supported in finding answers to manage technological issues. Translation support stake, during uh, in the area of translation support, excuse me, uh, stakeholders felt. That their needs were addressed in the language where they felt more most comfortable with. And the food distribution. The stakeholders felt that very supported in knowing that nutritional support was readily available and provided by our district. I'm going to now move into addressing their suggestions and things that they'd like to see improved. So through all of these uh, platforms, particularly through the um, uh, thought exchange and the parent surveys. And everything that you did to collect information, um. This informed us of where we need to improve or things that our our stakeholders would like to see. Stakeholders expressed an interest in providing in-person opportunities for social emotional connection for all of our students. One statement read, I wish there was a way to connect the children beyond the screen. This made us think about how we can address the need for students to connect with friends. Through adjusting the end of the year celebrations in a way that meet the the health department recommendations and guidelines. While providing a safe opportunity as we approach the end of the year activities. Stakeholders also expressed interest in providing more opportunities to get help with student when students don't understand a lesson or tasks. The interest here is to provide opportunities for an in-person academic support for our students. This sparked interest with stakeholders for when students don't understand a lesson or feel they need more information around a topic. Opportunities are available to catch up on grade level content they may have missed during the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year. Another suggestion was to continue access to the teachers either via emails during small group instruction. During their office hours when they, when help, when they need help with their assignments. Stakeholders also just suggested providing continued support and flexibility for the various methods of demonstrating students' learning. A parent gave the example that her child's TK teacher offers small group opportunities to ensure that students are grasping the content knowledge. Required for this grade level. Interest in helping students prioritize their workload and assignments and providing additional opportunities. For student to raise, for students to raise their grades with uh, while identifying as suggested. As well as providing opportunities for students to demonstrate their learning through various means. Now at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Cup. He's going to walk us through the virtual classroom resources that were offered to our students throughout the school year.
Oh, thank you. So now that Dr. Rodriguez has walked through all of the um, the three key um, themes from all the feedback we've been collecting from stakeholders. Um, the next set of data we want to share are just some of the outcomes um, from the resources that the Board of Education allocated for this year in supporting. Um, the current learning continuity and attendance plan. So you see the, the total number of devices and the technology rollout and the number of meals that were served. Um, so we just, we wanted to to pause to uh, recognize and give kudos to. Technology Department, um, Admin Services for all the incredible work. Um, this year you can see uh, twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight devices were distributed. Um, to students which reaches that one-to-one um, uh, status, I think, and and. For feedbacks this year, we started by twelve thousand seven hundred and forty-one. So that's a little bit over that number. Um, as students are enrolled this year, the process is when they, when they enroll in a school, they are, they receive a device. So that accounts for that additional devices. Um, and then also uh, kudos for all of working getting the wifi hotspots we had. That was a big gap last year, if you remember during the spring. Um, the digital equity and access to broadband at home so they could complete their work. Um, at the beginning of the year, I think at the end there we had distributed around eight hundred and now you can see the most current number is three thousand three hundred and thirty-five. So every family that has requested it has received it to date. And I talked to um, technology today and they said they had additional requests, I think for about eighty devices up till now. And so they put in order for two hundred devices that they'll be receiving. So all of those needs have been met. Um, and uh, just wanted to give a, a kudos to that, that department. Also, as you know, teachers have been receiving brand-new MacBooks and iPads to support their instruction in classroom. And as we start to come back on campus, every classroom has received the Promethean board that you see here demonstrated. Um, Randy Miller, our tech tosa, fantastic tech tosa, has been doing an outstanding job of training um, elementary teachers in March. And then um, we've got our next round of secondary teachers that have been going through this month. And so uh, across the board, positive feedback, teachers love the, the new technology, love the new Promethean board and seeing how it can engage students. Um, and especially as they start to come back on campus, um, be able to engage them uh, and and learning. And then also over a million meals served this year, it's kind of incredible to think about that. And just also shout out to the, the um, to to Maria Dabala and the nutrition services for all the work that they did. To make sure that the whole child was supported this year. At the end of distance learning last fall, we asked the board to allocate resources to extend several applications, online applications. We received feedback a year ago from parents that while they appreciated all the amazing applications, they would, they, they wanted a more streamlined approach online to, to learning. So that all students were going to the same place and they're receiving this communication from the same tool. So I just have here just a few of the key applications that we did scale up um, last year. CSO and Google Classroom are the learning management system for every student in grade. CSO for grades uh, TK to, Google Classroom grades three through twelve. Um, and then ob- obviously Zoom and you can see uh, two thou- two hundred and ninety-three thousand five hundred and eighty meetings logged so far this year. So um, then also another very popular, and we wanted to include the, the number of books that were provided to parents. Because as we met with parents uh, and students over the last month and and feedback meetings. This uh, this action around providing books came up again and again and again. I really appreciated that, um, that, that uh, white glove service of providing them materials for in-home learning. And so you can see the amount of books that were provided for K six and seven, twelve students. For, for tutoring, uh, we had uh, two thousand two hundred and sixty-four students um, have been, have received tutoring services. And at the secondary level, seven hundred and forty-one, um, supported through our tutoring program across the district. And we also wanted to give you an update on the uh, the student survey that we administered back in November. We had two thousand seven hundred and twenty-five students in grades five through twelve that took a short pulse survey. And we administered it in November. We analyzed it with a site leadership, that principal leadership meeting in December. And identified the key themes I'm going to share with you right now. And then every site received their site data from the students. So the overall uh, quantitative results from the Likert scale items and then also the open-ended responses that. That kind of gave the sites a little bit more detail about why students responded the way they did. This data along with the data that Dr. Rodriguez shared, we were using together, all the data together, triangulate the data to identify some suggested actions going into. Um, into next year that will bring, um, bring to the board uh, in May. So overall, um, if we, uh, the, one, one of the main items that we, uh, we looked at was this um, question that asked, how are you feeling about learning online? Thank you. Uh, and it was uh, a s- a, a seven-point Likert scale with a emoticons. On the left was uh, you know, terrible, a frowning face. All the way to the right where they felt great, you know, they really love learning online. And you can see the breakdown of how students responded. From uh, either one or two, sixteen percent of the students um, rated as a, a terrible one or two. Twenty-one percent as great for seven and then, and then the rest of students in between. We then asked a follow-up question, so if they, if they asked, if they said, you know, seven and great. We asked an open-ended question, can you tell us a little bit more about why you, why you said, why you said seven? So among, then we looked at all of that data, the open-ended responses just from students that selected number six or number seven. And uh, and we asked them, why do you, why do you feel, why, why is online learning great for you? And the three, three things that showed, one of them was a reduction in anxiety. So a lot of our students really thrived in this online environment. It, it lowered their, uh, they didn't have as much social interaction, which for some of our students was um, was, they, they appreciated. A lot of students appreciated the self-directed nature of online learning. So they're kind of a little bit, you know, they're at home, they have a little bit more flexibility and their personality, their learning stuff. Um, was such that they, they liked that, that uh, ability to, to self-direct and to manage their own time. You can see that top quote, we pulled some quotes from the data. One student says, I can go at my own pace and I feel I learn better like this. Um, which really kind of captures um, what a lot of, a lot of, a lot of the students from this, this category said. And then that last quote, I love online school, I just feel like because I'm so shy. And I have social anxiety and don't really like meeting new people, interacting with people. So you know, some, some people's personalities was really a, a good fit for them. Then if we look at the students that, that rated um, online learning between a three and a five, sixty-three percent of them. Um, it was, you know, kind of in the middle, they, 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 um, they appreciated some of the aspects of online learning, but they're ready to come back. Um, they, uh, they talked a little bit about some of the distractions at home. So while they uh, may, they may have found some benefits to it, they also um, had some distractions at home that kept them from fully uh, engaging. And then one of the, the, the themes that showed up again and again was this um, difference between being in person and being online. And how um, that informal connection with the teacher or with other students. You really lose that when you're at home. So a lot of the students talked about, you know, after school, after class, they could just ask a quick question to their teacher and get help on a problem they didn't know. Um, we're in the virtual classroom and so there's a lot more friction, they have to, you know, send an email or send an email to someone. So taking those extra steps was a little bit of a distraction. Um, so one student said, I miss school because it's so easy to ask for help. So I think that kind of captures a lot of the sentiment from that group. In the middle. And then finally, uh, we, we did, we did have sixteen percent of our students that really struggled with this mode of learning, with online learning. And um, the number one reason when we asked them why was around uh, mental health, isolation, they're missing their friends or missing that contact with people. Um, uh, that first quote, I can't see my friends in person because of the COVID nineteen, so I feel sad. So I think that, that quote really captures some of the sentiment. Um, not only from the survey that we did in November, but from the follow-up focus group that we did uh, last month with. We did a forty-four elementary kids and fifteen, fifteen secondary students. The other issues for students that, that had a hard time with the learning online was around um, uh, uh, communication. So again, going back to that informal communication, so having a few more steps to, to reach out to the teacher um, and try to get the help that they need. Um, and then also workload. So some students really struggled with having that capacity to manage their work, um, be able to self-direct. Whereas the kids on the other side of the spectrum, really, they thrive in that. And that's, that, that, that was something that they really um, did well in. Um, and so I think from this data, it just reinforces what we've heard from teachers, what we've seen teachers do is that. In any given classroom of twenty-five, thirty-five kids on the Zoom classroom, they're, you know, the teachers have the, this full spectrum. Of students that are engaging with this learning in different ways. And our teachers have done an outstanding job of, of, of personalizing the learning and creating different opportunities for them to reach out, stay connected. Um, and to meet the needs of, of a very challenging um, uh, situation. Um, it was, uh, it was good to hear their. Um, their, their input. Um, and helped us plan and helped the sites, because the sites got this data in December, to unpack this data with their sites. And then over the last few months, to look at that data. One of the metrics um, that continues to uh, to be tracked this year, and we shared a little bit of it in March fifteenth. Um, but wanted to share an update on, on that data, um, and is the chronic absenteeism rate. Chronic absenteeism as part of Senate Building A will continue to be uh, posted publicly through Data Quest. And so it is a number that we have been tracking very closely. Every site gets a weekly update on the number by student. Um, on Friday afternoons, they get a list of students uh, who are chronically absent two days every week. And then as, as Annette Ramirez shared last week, we have a very, very comprehensive support plan, three-tiered. Plan that addresses students that are falling into that chronic absenteeism classification every week. It is a moving target, so because the um, denominator changes, because the number, it's the number of. It's uh, ten percent of the stu- have uh, of days enrolled. So every day that students are enrolled, then you know, the, the number changes. So it is a moving target every week. But you can see here, this sort of gives a snapshot from September till March nineteen. And um, it's starting to kind of settle into the, a little bit lower actually from historically what we have been falling under, which is seven point four percent of our students do. Absent, which is about a point lower than what the state um, averages. Roland has done really well with uh, chronic absenteeism over as, since, as long as we tracked it for three years. Um, and I think it speaks to the, to the reality that students like coming to school in Roland. They like, um, they like their classes, they like their teachers, they feel engaged. Um, this is a metric that is tied to state uh, state priority of student engagement. So we um, anticipate um, continuing on this path and not seeing much um, that, that will fall either right at or a little bit below what we historically. Have um, performed at, which is a seven point four percent, which was the last time it was published on the dashboard. This is uh, and this shows you an, an update, just uh, uh, the, the number, the number of participants that, that have um. Come to the parent guardian training uh, throughout this year. And so you can see the, the tech bites, Randy Miller has been leading those. Um, secondary success, Go Go Parent, Grandparents and Wellbeing Wednesday. So you've heard a lot of updates on this, we wanted to share with the board on the latest. Total number of uh, participants that um, parents have been able to participate in. Communication overview, uh, one of the goals for Roland is communication in the LCAP. And so we wanted to give you an update on the progress, the different way, all the different ways that Roland unifies, communicates with the community, with parents and the students. So in Facebook, we uh, compared to a year ago, increased by five hundred and fifty-two followers. So in Facebook, we, compared to a year ago, increased by five hundred fifty-two followers. Instagram, I believe, is new, we didn't, I didn't have that data from last year. So that, that's why there's not a, a change. For Twitter, an increase of three hundred ninety-eight followers. And Victor, it looks like the panel's about to. For Peachjar, over thirteen thousand users, nineteen hundred followers sent out. And then Dr. Rodriguez shared about Parents Square. But this was really one of the, one of the things we surveyed the teachers on last year, a year ago, was how are you communicating with families? And there were fourteen or fifteen different ways that, that teachers were primarily communicating with families. So classroom dojo, seesaw, Google Classroom, phone calls, emails. So as a parent, if you have three kids in the district, you may be using this app for one, one student. You may be using Google Classroom for another, you may be, you know, getting a text from another teacher. So it was a big transition, but everybody jumped on board and the parents have just raved about it. And so I just want to thank the board for allocating the resources for Parents Square because it's been a huge success and, and a great way to kind of streamline all the communication. You can see a quote from a parent there. I like being able to easily communicate with my child's teacher and hear about school events. So I think that that really captures a lot of the sentiment we heard in the state over groups and we hear informally. And the sites love it too, teachers like it, the sites, the principals like it, it's really easy to communicate. So at this time, I'm going to hand it off to, give me a minute. Hand it off to Dr. Rivas, who's going to walk us through professional development.
Good evening, and thank you for raising that floor. As we plan for professional development this year to support our teachers in the virtual classroom, we leaned on feedback from our students, from our parents, and from our staff so that we could identify key areas of focus and priority for the year. In the spring of 2020, we collected data, and I should probably have moved that slide again. We collected data in terms of what the experiences in the virtual classroom were like, some questions in terms of what went well, what were some of the challenges that we saw, and tried to gather that feedback. So you can tell from this slide that we had close to two thousand student responses to the survey. We had approximately four hundred and sixty staff responses to the survey and a little over four thousand parent responses. And then we also held focus group meetings, which allows us to dig a little bit deeper into what those experiences were like. So we were fortunate enough to be able to have five student focus groups and twenty-three teacher focus groups. Now, the instructional approaches were instrumental in helping us gather all of that feedback from teachers because they were able to facilitate those conversations at their sites. And you can tell in terms of the questions that kept coming up, and that's really what the feedback was telling us when we surveyed that from the focus groups, is there's a lot of questions and themes began to emerge around student engagement, social-emotional needs, assessment and feedback. So those were the big areas that kept coming up in terms of challenges and in terms of social priority. As we started out the year, a key priority in our professional development planning was to support teachers in adjusting their teaching practices to the virtual classroom in response to the feedback that was also gathered. The ISTI microcourses provided a set of self-paced courses for our teachers to learn foundational practices and principles with regard to teaching online. The four courses our teachers had access to included creating a community in online learning classrooms, designing, designing online learning experiences and assessing learning in online environments. Each of these courses were further broken down into modules with key ideas and practices. But to tailor that learning for our staff and to bring focus to perhaps what may be a lot of new content for teachers, as they were also learning and navigating this new world in the virtual classroom, we used data from the spring of 2020 to help us narrow down and prioritize the key concepts. And so what you see here are those five key instructional strategies for the virtual classroom that we thought across the district would be beneficial for all of our teachers and all of our students. So those five practices are, simple is better. So this is about choosing online tools that teachers and students are familiar with and repurposing those same tools to different tasks. So that instead of learning new applications, instead of learning new platforms, our teachers and our students can focus on the intended learning outcomes. The second one is cognitive load. And as you all probably know, students have limited memory and attention spans. So they can manage maybe anywhere from three to five ideas at a time. So being purposeful and chunky the information that we're presenting to, to students is crucial so that we can help them retain that information, but also both be able to understand it more deeply. So we didn't want to max out kids. Student agency is the third one that you see here. And this really ties back to student engagement. And that is key in learning, allowing for students to have a voice and choice in the learning really brings them in and pulls them into the process. And it also allows them to go deeper into the learning. So things like creating flexible tasks, flexible timing, so that students can demonstrate and achieve mastery in different ways goes a crucial point. The fourth one is formative assessments. Now, this is critical for teachers to be able to plan next steps in instruction, but it's also critical for kids to know where they're at in the learning. So points of emphasis in this category included low-stakes checks for understanding at a higher frequency than we typically see. And the last item there is around meaningful feedback. So this is about using effective tools that will provide that timely and meaningful feedback to students so that they can then adjust to the learning expectations. So things that we talked about in this particular category included peer review, audio and video feedback, and reflection opportunities for kids. The microcourses and the five key strategies were well-received and responsive to the needs of our teachers. From the data that you're seeing here on this slide, you'll see that we had four hundred and forty-three of our teachers participate in that professional learning. Of those that participated, you'll see that eighty-two percent agreed that the content that they engaged with in their learning supported their planning for the virtual classroom. And then you'll also see that seventy-one percent agreed that the process itself also supported collaboration with your colleagues and peers. Furthermore, you'll see that seventy-five percent would like to participate in additional microcourses. What you see here is a community of practice. Collaboration between teachers is crucial in taking the learning to implementation. It provides teachers opportunities to discuss, to share their learning and their practices, and then be able to adjust and extend that and refine it as they were being collaborated with peers. Across the district, our communities of practice were facilitated by instructional approaches. And so they take this initial learning and then they provide continued learning experiences and opportunities for collaboration throughout the year. The CLPs met regularly and throughout the year. So for example, the kindergarten community of practice, they worked on the Care and Connect Initiative, focusing on literacy, math, and social-emotional connection. Teachers developed workshops for parents, they ensured that students had supplies and books, and they invited authors to speak to parents and students about their needs. I believe this is the kindergarten community of practice. Now, on this slide, you'll see some data as well. And this is from a survey that was done in fall following the November professional development day. And in that survey, we included questions about the application of the learning with response to those five key instructional ideas and practices that I shared earlier and two additional ones that you see there listed, which is around positive community and communication. You'll notice the data is organized into three groups. The bottom group or category of bars you'll notice there is where teachers expressly felt really confident and knowledgeable in that practice or that skill. The middle bars represent the areas where teachers felt like they tried some of these practices and they had varying degrees of success. The very top grouping shows you where teachers expressed, I need more professional development or training. So let me just walk you through really quickly on the bottom and the top. So at the bottom, you'll see where teachers felt really comfortable. You'll notice the blue bar extends out, where the blue bar is around simple is better. So teachers really feel comfortable with that concept and that skill. You'll see also creating a positive community is something teachers felt that they were able to do really well. And the third one there in terms of strength is that communication. When you focus on the top groups, this is the area where they felt they needed more support and training. So you'll notice the orange bar is extending out a little further. That is around the area of formative assessment. And then you'll notice the next bar is yellow, and that is around student agency. And then very close between the green and the, is sort of the gray, is that meaningful feedback is the gray where it extends out. So those would be three areas that we could incorporate into planning next year. But it was also data that was useful for planning this year as school sites and coaches work with staff. Now, professional development didn't just focus around those microcourses and those five big ideas. It also focused around the instructional focus areas for each of the schools, which comes back to our framework for teaching and learning. And so at the beginning of the year, we had two days that allowed our schools to focus and work around that, those areas. And that was, one day was in September and one day was in November. So in September, at the elementary level, our teachers and schools extended their learning around our focus areas. So reading schools in year two, which include Rowland Elementary, Jellik and Shellen, it focuses on the transfer of knowledge around leaders and mothers workshop to reframe their practices in the virtual classroom. Writing schools in year one, which include Northam, Bladford, Talesses and Hurley, focused on identifying structures of the workshop model and the writing process, but also accounted for the virtual learning environment. Writing schools in year two, which include Evara and Urbida, focused on using the virtual units of study to apply for small group instruction to support special populations. Math schools in year one, which include Killian and Aurora Morph, focused on the introduction to routines, problem types, and modeling in the virtual classroom. Math schools in year two, including Hallenworth via Porter-Nussel, focused on implementing math routines to support learners in the virtual classroom and planning for meaningful math discourse. It's important to note that although today's professional learning centered around their instructional focus areas, that learning was framed around the virtual classroom and integrated concepts from the microcourses as well as the five big ideas that I shared. Apologize, this is hot in here. At the secondary level, professional development on September twenty-fifth was centered around a framework for teaching and learning. And in there, we focused around two new domains that the schools will be launching this year. And that was student intellectual engagement and the learning environments that foster student success. So the learning really focused on integrating those into the focus areas and seeing how that would now fit into the virtual classroom. So focus areas, just as a reminder, for Alvarado is project-based learning. For Gianna, that's understanding by design. No Galus is student engagement. And Rowland is instructional analysis, with Santana also being professional, I'm sorry, project-based learning. Now, it's important to note that those focus areas are really less in design, ideas and templates that help the teachers take the work and plan meaningful instruction for kids. Also important to note that while the day focused around the teaching and learning framework, it was also framed through the lens of the virtual classroom and concepts from the microcourses as well as the five big ideas were integrated into that learning. What you see here is data on the survey that was getting followed in that professional development. So after the professional development, teachers were surveyed around their experience for that day. And so this chart here, what it shows you is how confident or how teachers rated their knowledge or skill in the area that was provided for professional development. So the theme or topic that they engaged in learning and what they rated their knowledge or skill. The red bars represent how they felt about their knowledge or skill in that topic before professional development. And then the purple reflects or represents how they felt about their knowledge or skill in that same area after the professional development. So you'll notice that the red bars, the, the higher points are more to the left, with the purple ones being to the right. So to help you kind of map that out, we put in the mean score. So the mean scores show a growth in how the teachers perceived or rated their own knowledge and skill in that topic, showing that the professional development had an impact on how they felt about their knowledge and their skills and their ability to improve. This other data point here shows us how teachers felt, whether they agreed or did not agree with the following statement. And that statement is that I learned instructional strategies and lesson delivery methods that support the unique needs of all students, including, including English, language learners, students with disabilities, foster and homeless. A one rating is low and a five rating is high. So you'll notice from this chart that eighty-three percent of the teachers felt that that day provided them with instructional strategies to support all of their needs. You'll notice here, this slide is about professional development for the second day, which is November second. So this one follows suit with the work that was done on September and really extends that learning and the continuity of that learning. So important to note also that during this day, we were a little bit deeper into the year. And so teachers had a lot more experience in the virtual classroom, but also probably had a little bit more in terms of understanding of their challenges and how that could be folded into the professional learning. So to just walk you through what the professional learning was for the elementary schools. Reading schools year two, which again include Rowland Elementary, Jellik and Shellen, they focused on developing proficiency for small groups, which included conferring and individual assessments in the virtual learning environment. Writing schools year one, that included Northam, Bladford and Talesses, as well as Hurley, they focused on the units of study and writing, small group instruction in the virtual classroom. Writing schools year two, which include Evara, Urbida, focused on the virtual units of study as well as conferring and small focused on the virtual units of study as well as conferring and small group instruction, including the development of a writing toolkit for conferring in writer's workshop. Math schools year one, which are Killian, Aurora Mor, they focused on multi-digit strategies, so they unpacked that concept. And they also continued their work and their understanding around accounting practices. And math schools in year two, which are Hollandworth, Bea, Porta and Oswald, they worked around math routines and explored ideas for daily high-yield math routines that would allow students to struggle productively with the new content. At the secondary level, the schools continued to deepen their work that they had started in September around the domains for the teaching and learning framework, which again was the intellectual engagement and the learning environments. And they mesh and integrated that with their focus areas. The work at Alvarado centered around authentic assessments. At Gianna, teachers centered or explored around working and connecting their focus area work to the five key instructional themes that I shared earlier, as well as the work from the micro courses. At Nogales, the focus was on student engagement through student groupings and student collaboration. At Rowland, teachers took a deeper dive into their domain, which is intellectual engagement, and they worked this department to review practices that were promising so that they can implement them and hold them throughout the year. And at Santana, teachers used the distance learning playbook to explore and implement strategies that would support their domain, which is around fostering learning environments for student success. Similarly, a survey at the end of that professional development was also used to gather data and feedback from teachers about how they felt with regard to the professional development. And like the other chart that you saw earlier, this chart represents teacher, how teachers rated their knowledge and skill and the theme before and after the training. So again, we see here, the red bar is more on the left and the purple one is more on the right, representing that teachers rated their learning as growth after having gone through the training or participated in the professional development. The averages are also included there to help you see where they were, again, red is before the training and the purple is after the training. And then this data chart, similar to the one that you saw before, shares or shows us how teachers, whether they agreed or disagreed to the statement that what they learned that day provided them a useful strategies to support all of their kids. Again, English learners, students with disabilities, homeless, foster youth. And you'll notice again in this chart, more than, and I want to say, is it eighty-three percent as well or eighty-four, I think, on this chart? The numbers are super small. Thank you, Brian. But an overwhelming majority of the teachers that responded to the surveys felt that they agreed that that day gave them skills and strategies to be able to support all of their students. And that's sort of an overview of the professional development that our teachers experienced towards the beginning of the year. I'm going to pass it back to Dr. Zamora to close out the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Vivas, Dr. Hough and Dr. Rodriguez. So with the information that is included in this study session will be used to draft our local control and accountability plan for the 2021-2022 school year. And our next steps are going to be to bring that draft to the board on May 27th for a public hearing, bring it back for final approval of the board on June 10th and provide it to the coming Office of Education on June 30th along with our district budget for approval from the county. Any questions?
Anna.
Great presentation. Thank you very much for all your part of work. I just have a question about the professional development for these three different ones that you graphed, all three different ones, or they're all right on page 28? It says four hundred and forty-three are USC teachers participating years. And then on page, another page, page thirty-four, five hundred and twenty-nine did the question. I was just curious. And page thirty-eighth at four hundred and eighty-eight, teachers.
Yeah, the first survey was done in spring of 2020. So this was, we had just gotten a dismissal and closed out that year and we gathered some feedback or at that time. The other information that you see with the respondents, that was two additional surveys in the fall. One in September that followed the first professional development day in September. And then the second one, which you'll probably see different members as well, is the second survey from November that followed the professional development on November 2nd. So there are three different surveys and the data points are different. So that's why you're seeing a difference in that number.
And I never saw the median score. That was great how you did it, how it was and how I really liked seeing that. And then my last question is, what about the teachers that did not have the professional development? Did like the principal reach out to them or how did they, the teachers that didn't attend, how did they get that information that they needed to teach the student?
As part of the professional development days at the beginning of the year and also in September and in November, you'll recall that I mentioned that learning from the micro courses and the five big ideas were integrated into that, and so they were included. Now, teachers who didn't participate got that baseline. So there was a baseline of knowledge and content for professional development for all teachers. And then the teachers that participated above and beyond through the micro courses definitely weren't able to benefit a lot more. But there was a baseline in terms of the learning that was set for all teachers. That was addressed in August when they came back and then also followed up and integrated through the other learning days. And it's also important to note that coaches at the sites continue to work with teachers on a regular basis to provide that support around those themes and ideas. So for example, at Nogales, the coaches would survey teachers in terms of like, where are you experiencing that challenge? And then they would plan workshops for teachers to join participating throughout the year. So that was happening across the sites as well. So that learning was integrated and it wasn't just that you participate in this or you don't get anything.
And you have to my next question, which was after they, that was really great. You gave them the information that they weren't able to attend, but then they were able to go to a Tulsa thing. Well, I'm not sure about this and they would be able to help us. Thank you so much.
Our district's instructional coaches are very active in all of the professional development. And they become a site bee along with our principals to ensure that our teachers always have that support at their fingertips on their side.
I have a question on that page also. The Y axis, the three hundred, what is that number? The number of respondents.
It's the total number of respondents.
Respondents, yeah. The total respondents, I tried to add it up. So total number of four hundred and eighty-eight, is that, is that N equals four eighty-eight, is the total number of four eighty-eight? And the height of the bar is the number of the respondents?
Correct.
So, but you add it up, it's more than four eighty-eight.
So this is two eighty plus one sixty, so three eighty-four.
Add it by four.
And then you add these two. Yeah, so each.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay. Red, this, each color is total to four eighty-eight. Okay, yeah.
Any other questions? First of all, on page six, the thought exchange that you brought us. You know, go to, okay. Never heard of it before. It's a fantastic instrument. I can't. And the number of times I've gone to a conference or a meeting and you sit at a table in a large room and other people say, yeah, that's the same thing. Yeah, that's the same thing. But you never capture that because they don't speak up. And I think this is great, this thought exchange. I really like the idea of it. The second one is on page ten, you talk about the robust support from the whole family during distant learning from the Family Resource Center. I would hope that that robust support from the Family Resource Center will even be more robust when we go back to in-person in-person classroom. Because there are a number of students that are having social emotional problems at home that will need additional resources from the Family Resource Center. And I think they're going to play an important role in having students return to the classroom. So I understand we have a second social worker there now. And they're going to be a major support, I think, for those students, like that sixteen percent that were very fogged on your graph. For those that dishated online training or online instruction. They're going to have some social emotional problems or something like that. So I hope the Family Resource Center is actively involved in the plan when it's going. You answered, and you spoke to Donna. The one item on page thirteen, provide in-person opportunities for academic support. And number three, continue to access to teachers via email, et cetera, and more opportunities to get help when they don't understand the lesson. Kind of supports our decision under the board to have those two additional hours each day twice a week to provide that. This kind of supports what our decision was on that. Additional opportunities for students to raise their grade. I remember last year, we changed the graduation requirements, depending if they needed it in subject matters. So I notice that hasn't come to the board yet, but that's something that's going to be considered again this year. Whether we have to modify graduation requirements for students to graduate.
So we are looking at all of the student data. That would be something that's in interest to the board. We can certainly bring that forward.
Yeah, especially if it's going to.
Just write information.
Yes, it's kind of a negative impact on our number of students.
Our staff is very stressed and interested in not doing that. We sat in our coaches group meetings with teachers and so forth, but I did just this week a Dr. Zamora and I spoke about gathering the data around which of our students are credit efficient and why. Is that something that is constantly monitored by our schools and by our ed services team? So we will look at that, just want to share that information with you.
And I remember, it was two or three years ago, in Nogales, there was one student that was got disipped in quite a number of units. And he went to the online class, took a lot of units a couple of months before graduation and was able to graduate. But can we tell him?
That was not the case, but I know the student here, we took, you and I had a conversation like that would will be right, but.
And would it be too late for students to have that opportunity, take classes online?
That student had already enrolled in classes and so has not been doing the work and so bumped up the work they were doing in the past.
Oh, I see.
In a class they were already in. So it is something, all of our students, our school counselors and our principals and our ed services team monitor, we look at every part of support, every report part, watching and checking against graduation requirements and meeting families and talking to students and so forth. Well, I'll, we'll continue to look at that data and I'll share that information with you.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. The point we did it prior to, it's efficient times for graduations, so we have a pretty good decision. Page eighteen, where you had students' fall survey, November twentieth, grades five through twelve, two thousand seven twenty-five was the end. And six or seven percent felt that learning was six or seven on there. What we don't know is, are they saying it's a seven because they can turn their camera off and go play ball outside? Or is it a seven because they really enjoy it? That's what we don't know about that. Why, why the story is six and seven?
Can you control the learning, Alvarado? You know, some are, some students thrive on a virtual, in a virtual environment. It just could be the way students learn.
You know, but it kind of mirrors what's happening in the technology world where you see Microsoft and Google all these technology companies where since we've gone to, no longer coming to the office, they're working at home. I know I have two nephews in Silicon Valley. They do most of their office work between eleven midnight and four in the morning. They love, they love to do it at night, staying up all night long. So it kind of supports that concept, you know, for the older kids that they're just used to late night education versus regular days. Or there's that one bill that they're trying to support where it's high school start later in the day. It's just their, their, their clock is different than our clocks.
There is something great about what has happened in the last year with regards to virtual learning. I think our teachers have done an amazing job in the year. Our coaches, our support staff, our principals, our classified staff, everybody has rallied around this. And we know that learning will never be the same again because we've learned so much. We are definitely different the way we handle things. You saw the number of virtual meetings, Zoom meeting. I think I have about ten a day, but you know, that's something I never did before. So we've all changed a bit.
I agree with you, Anna. And this kind of goes back to what Donna was asking. What is the total number of teachers possible? I realize that might change from day to day, but we had four forty-three and then we had four eighty-eight and then another number that Donna was mentioning.
We've got approximately seven hundred teachers in this room.
Seven hundred?
Seven hundred specifically.
And those that miss out on some of this training, are they identified? Are there, are there videotapes of the training that they can pick up on or?
It doesn't necessarily mean they miss out. It means they didn't complete the survey.
Oh, okay. Okay, so it's, I can be out of the survey. Okay, so we really don't know how many actually depend.
We do, because they're contemplated.
Oh, okay, without. I think, how would you rate your knowledge of the topic? The mean score was two thirty-four out of five forty-nine teachers.
On a scale of four, from zero to four.
Right, right. So we actually increased it, two thirty-four prior to, I assume the red line means prior to the training, to three sixteen after the training.
Correct.
So that's very significant. So that's very significant, I would, uh, of course, out of a four point scale. Whoever did that training, very effective. And that's what I have, thank you very much, it was excellent presentation.
Good evening, you did a beautiful presentation, thank you so much for taking the time to do that for us. Um, page fifteen, I have a question on that. Hats off to the just like a million twenty people, wow. That's just some power factor. The one I can't seem to know is what's that six fifty two from the um boards, is that, what's that for? How do you use it on virtual?
This is our Promethean board that uh was purchased for every single classroom. This this is the Promethean board.
Yeah.
And so this was purchased for every single classroom.
Every single classroom has that.
Right, Dr. Um.
Yes.
One.
Yes, every classroom has has money for.
Thank you, and then the seventeen thousand three fifty five hotline calls filled it, is that from the, done by attendance or is that done?
Actually, the technology department under Mr. Flores's direction. So we had a live hotline for students and parents to call anytime they needed um assistance with technology. So hats off though to our technology team, who's done an amazing job supporting all of this virtual learning um consistently. So thank you to them.
Thank you to the technology department, that was amazing. Um, the other thing that I have a question on is on page seventeen. Uh, students tutored, um, what percentage of students are these? Um, and how do you go about um? The elementary and the secondary.
No, I don't have that information with me, but I can definitely provide it to Dr. Mitchell so that she can provide it to you. Is that it?
I need to know it's enough number of students that are getting the tutoring hours.
So to clarify for the information you'd like. Um, we can provide you with the percentage, so we look at, I mean, we have twelve thousand seven hundred and. I say it's twelve thousand six hundred sixty eight, but you can say twelve thousand seven hundred fifty two or something like that. Um, and so out of the total of twelve thousand students, twelve thousand six hundred sixty eight roughly. Then you can see that there's roughly two thousand nine hundred two thousand um, three thousand students that participate. So it's roughly a quarter of our students are receiving tutoring. And that's tutoring, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the tutoring, in our secondary schools, there's a tutoring um opportunity for them every day after school as well as on Wednesdays during the day. And they can log into Zoom, we have our avid tutors, we have teachers that are there and they provide tutoring. But it's not tutoring, but I say, you know, um, Mrs. Dolage, you need to come and meet with me, we have to produce some tutoring. It's a student at home, they realize, I don't know how to do this essay or this math problem or this science experiment. So they call and they get tutoring assistance, Zoom, they get tutoring assistance. And then same with our elementary, there's, teachers are holding sessions, um, but then the board also approved the use of the paper. Um, call in to be able for students to receive tutoring services. So it isn't something that we assign, it's something that students realize that they need. And then teachers realize that kids are struggling, they would say. Julie, we see that you're struggling, know that there's tutoring that's available and it's open until the evening hours. So there's not a reason why a student should sit and fester and struggle, there's always the ability for them to get the support and help that they need. So the reason I would do that is because you said you need to know if it's enough. I'm not gonna be able to determine if it's enough, but I can certainly give you the data, but it's roughly twenty five percent of our students are engaging with tutoring.
Okay, thank you.
Or elementary and secondary.
Thank you, I think I got one answer.
Okay.
I'll get to you later. I I have a question on the student, because before the pandemic, we have um. No, but yeah, it it was pandemic, we would have um outside services or security. Could be um, uh, have one kids or how. Are they still available or do they?
So you want to, this one is outside services, you wanna?
So um, in some places, we had our teachers, it wasn't always outside services. Um, we did have some outside services come into the schools, but we can't do that right now. So um, it's it's um, it was a combination. Now it's still a combination of who's providing the services, however, it's all online.
Think of some of what you're referring to is did after school enrichment, it wasn't necessarily tutoring. But we did have, like you mentioned specifically in the title one, so we did have opportunities for after school enrichment. Um, different companies or different folks would do, um, even language schools, some of our campuses, students can be after school. But tutoring, for the most part, was provided by staff. Not a hundred percent, but for the most.
Okay, I mean, some years, uh, before the pandemic, see, uh. Because we have kind of. And it depends on who the. Providing the uh. The. Health.
I'm not sure, there's one company that I'm thinking of, um, but it's not.
There are more than one.
No, I mean, we don't have contract funding to that, so I don't, I'm not sure what you're referring to, um, but I'd be happy to talk with you further, answer your question.
Yeah, we we uh, before pandemic, you approved some, but.
So we did, so through somebody at Rebus's office, we have done for um, we for um debate. And we have done um some robotics, some engineering, field trips, USC, some of those things, but that isn't tutoring. But there, yes, absolutely, uh, Mr. Chen, you're correct, we do have contracted services for extra services for our students for enrichment. Um, maybe that's what you're referring to, because the board certainly did uh agree to that and and did approve those instructions and our families and students.
So the student, you are, uh, relation here. Pressing teachers should be. That's true.
So the board also approved the use of paper, which is the company that we had spent some time talking about, which provides tutoring services in grades two through eight. Two or three, two, two through eight, that's happened since the pandemic, that's outside. We have added college tutors that are are employed at work through, and so they are tutoring students as well, but we have staff. Others, I that's all I, I've been my couple minutes that are. They would be avid tutors for us, yeah, so Mount SAC does offer, Mount SAC, the library has offered online tutoring services, Mount SAC has offered. So students could go to other resources within our community for academic assistance, but what we have um. Provided directly as a district service is what's reflected here, so this doesn't reflect library, doesn't reflect um. Like county library system or the Mount SAC, but there was a flyer that was shared with families about others who were outside of.
Right, I could. Thank you, uh, you you did an amazing job, there's a lot of data here and I really, really appreciate it. Um, on slide six, thought exchange, just want to get a little more information. And then Mr. Melkin touched on it, it is, it's wonderful to, I mean, you've been to conferences and they get that data in real time, so that's. Um, to understand the participants, the two hundred and thirteen participants, is that from every meeting that was on the previous slide or how did that work?
That's correct, so um, the two hundred and thirteen is the total number of participants across all the stakeholder groups that that participated in thought exchange. In just a caveat, not every participant that showed up at the meetings logged on to that, so we have more participants that came to the focus groups. Um, that that participated than um participated in thought exchange, yes, it's across all of the all the group meetings.
Got it, got it, and then if I wrote a comment or just even wrote a comment or did I put what a co- a thought is? And we can like it or not like it, is that what we?
Correct.
Fine, fine, what's the difference between a thought and a comment?
Um, so the comments were if um, they, you can comment on other thoughts. Um, and that that just wasn't turned on for this, um, for uh, for for this thought exchange that we did across these these.
I made a thought, Mr. Melkin commented.
Comment on that way, I might have that turned on for this.
And they did rate it.
Yeah, and so another thing to note is that that we use the same thought exchange across from meeting one all the way to the end, so um. So people in meeting seven could see all the thoughts from meeting one and rate those as well, so it just began to. To to grow and people at different meetings could interact with each other and comment on each other's ideas as the meetings progress.
And that's helpful because then you don't have to bucketize many for every individual meeting, right? You see a question or a statement there, I know yes to that or 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 rate that as well. Do you know, I mean, otherwise you have to bucketize everything after the similar thoughts, right? Okay, thank you. Um, on the next, on page slide eight. I just want to get a better understanding, you have a four point O scale here, is that twenty four people responding up to the right hand side? There's four stars, twenty four um out of two hundred and five, which is different than your two hundred and oh. Just trying to understand that rating scale.
Right, so the rating scale, this take, I took um two two hundred and five of the of the comments and ranked them based on. Um, how participants rated that that comment. So each, if. If your participant, you uh, you add your, 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 you've done it before, so you add your thought and then once you submit it. Then you have the option to go through as many of of the other ideas as you want to rank them on a scale of one to five. So I can like rank one a two, rank one a four. As a participant, I'm not gonna see every single thought that comes through unless I spend two hours going through that. It's gonna randomly give you five to ten thoughts based on how much time that we have, it's gonna give Donna five or ten other ones. And um, so that there's consistent ratings across all the ideas. So on this idea, where it says parent square has been a perfect way to have all information in one place. Um, twenty four people had that randomly assigned to them and they ranked it. Um, so through the random assignment, um, statistically, we're able to say that that's probably the way the whole group. If if we had all ranked all of them, then um, then this is likely, it would have been a four point O plus plus all of these.
So that's very helpful, because I didn't see, as an individual participant, I didn't see all of them, I got to see a handful, which I'm not gonna read all of them, I'll get tired, right?
Right, right.
And so the ones that I did see, that I responded, that's what the twenty four is. Okay, and then I guess the um. On the twelve, I guess you mentioned on page twelve, because the lights were high again, it's just the response that positivity to that statement is now a negative. I'm 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 certifying a positive, that's.
Right, so they're agreeing with that statement.
They're agreeing with that statement, that negative statement.
That negative statement, yeah, okay, no, that's helpful. So then that's where you talk about the bucketizing, so then that's the work that we did on the backend of. You know, reading through all the comments and deciding um qualitatively, is this a negative sentiment, is it a positive sentiment? And and in this case, um, it would be something that we would. Proceed to be something they'd want to be improved, so negative, yeah, yeah, perfect, thank you.
Um, under the correct accent, here's on page twenty two. This is more of a comment. It looks like from November twen- the November twentieth, um, you have a high low, high low, it's a very systematic pattern, it's not. It's not, there's something one of the twelve data points, it it looks like an A B A B, so I would just ask you guys to take a look, it looks like there's. Something else, it may be, I I first thought when I was at home, I thought, is there a code where A over B and somehow they're repeating class and nodding class, but that's week after week of. One week ahead, I'm looking at a calendar, week one is high, week two is low, actually, week one is high and so. Um, something in there doesn't look like standard statistics, so I think you guys need to take a look at that, just a comment. Um, and and why it's trending in the right direction, I see a trend in there, I like it, that's that was really good. And then, um, for. On page twenty, I think we touched on, it was four hundred and thirty three teachers participated, I heard seven hundred teachers. I think we asked consistently how many teachers were involved, so that was kind of what was, I was throwing the class, and then.
So I think that refers back um to.
That can be a little bit.
It would.
So this number comes from, as Dr. Rebus mentioned. This, these were items that were embedded in the November survey following the district PD. And by November, they had had, they had the the micro courses in August. And then it's well been timed to kind of implement the strategy, so we just wanted to do a pulse check. On what's their feeling about the micro courses, did it help them, they've been working, you know, with that content for a few months, had access to the content for the full year. And so as Dr. Mitchell mentioned, the four hundred and forty three represents students who, teachers who participated in the November survey. And then also check the question on the um survey, I participated in the full micro courses. So it's it's a little bit lower than um, it's something full number of teachers, because it would be the teachers that participate in the full micro courses. Um, and we asked them their perception of that that training.
Again, the micro courses were embedded, we have the rest of the progression of development. And our coaches and our principals also provided. The the micro courses were also archived, right? So that teachers could go back and do it again or do it on their own time. Um, but there was a a um definite um. Knowledge that was provided to all teachers. So to make sure that everybody had the fundamental learning of virtual classrooms. Right before they we started the school year. So um, our principals, when they started the school year, they reviewed that and provided opportunities for teachers to attend who didn't get a chance to attend. During those um three days before school started. So we made sure everybody had foundational learning, and then the micro courses added additional layers to that learning, and they are archived, so you can go back and.
Thank you. Um, other than the professional learning, if we can start at page thirty two, how did we pick these topics?
I can take that one, because it started with me, you don't be a taken, you don't go many. So the, in terms of the topics of reading, writing and math.
Just overall, high level, thirty thousand score, you know, thirty thousand foot level.
Um, so we work together with our group of um, uh, our, as our as sort of team as well as our principal. And we used to have um, our, the different framework, we developed our rolling um framework for teaching and learning, which is displayed on the left. From there, when you look at the very center of that the eyeball, there are the our our primary focus areas and destruction. And so we developed, we have a reading, writing and a math focus, and then each of it then branches out, so that chart can be read from the outside in as well as the inside out. And so we have reader's workshop, writer's workshop and um CGI, and suddenly we had to get that one to the map. And we also reached to, uh, when we first began, we had um. What do you like, inquiry was an option, and so we did a two year session with inquiry and then taken that one out and focusing on the reading.
Okay. I'm gonna do that, because I really want to get to.
I have books and books on it.
Page page thirty four, when I look at page thirty four, thank you for adding it to the name, I I saw this as too natural, I'll take. Um, and I see that you make progression, it is great, but really what I see in the before statement, if we look at the two on the left, it looks, and I don't have a data point. It looks like the three is about one sixty five, the respondents, forty eight is what I guessed for the other ones, the two right, the two right sides. Which means around forty percent of the population said they were already proficient in this topic still.
Um, I I would venture to say that they have some skill and they felt confident, so um.
And that's to go back to my question, how do we pick some pieces? Because almost half the population is already on a three or four level, and is this the right topic? And that it, it just, it's just a question on that side of it, how do, if we move the needle, there's no doubt about that. Uh, and that's a great thing, um, but is that the right topic that we should be if if nine percent roughly already said they were at a level four for the topic? And that might be that they, they're tendered employees, that they're, uh, we didn't hit all seven hundred, so it was a four hundred and fifty three that that said, I'm gonna go to training, but I'm already a level four or a level three.
Right, so um, if if maybe this this might provide some insight and helping to understand that in terms of. That work is ongoing, so te- teachers and schools have been working on focus areas for a number of years, so they're. So there's already a lot of knowledge and content around their their work, right? And so what they do is they then, uh, the principals coordinate and plan in terms of what are next steps. And they usually work with their leadership teams to to design what the learning is going to be for that day and work with them as well to support them. In terms of how do we move the needle forward to uh get more of the learning and aggression in that learning that we're that we're sort of embarking on. So for example, with uh project-based learning, authentic assessments, you're going to have the plus of teachers um that are stronger in authentic assessments than other teachers, right? But as a school, and as a leadership team, we're designing the the learning day and experience for our teachers. How we move the bulk of our teachers to more of that, right? So you're going to see some variances with differing uh confidence in that subject, which um quite frankly, the principals use to also bring in some of the other teachers that have uh not as much knowledge. This is about building um their knowledge. So yes, they start off with some, and some have a little bit more in the numbers. And that's what you'll see there.
And I think that's totally, it is about moving that needle forward. And I that obviously, that's there, that's what it's doing. Just when I saw this and I thought, a big chunk of the the teachers were already fairly proficient, so. Well, that's helpful. Um, and then I guess on the next page.
Okay, you know, before you ask the next question, I just want to make sure too. Our focus this year, we didn't introduce any new focus areas because you asked me about how do we pick those topics, right? Um, we didn't introduce any new focus areas around reader's workshop, writer's workshop, the high schools. Our secondary schools have a different focus area than the remaining that I mentioned. But our focus this year, when our ed services team, our principals and our instructional coaches and our our teachers, what was really, how do we take our current knowledge and apply it in a virtual setting? And so I think that could apply to some of this since here too, that I knew about the topic. But then, like the content area, but then I gained knowledge in terms of how to be more successful or how to be feel more confident and proficient within applying my academic instructional pedagogy to an online setting.
Yeah, that's absolutely great. So we just, we just want to build that up. So we want to make sure the teachers are getting what they need to do their job, meaning to their their being.
Perfect. Can I just add one thing to you? So just.
Sorry, I ended up one.
No, no, I think.
So I see it's, we didn't introduce branding pedagogy or 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 branding instructional content. It was how it was. The method of the instructional development.
Yeah, I mean, we would want to come in with everybody, everybody got a one, right? That is, we shouldn't be there, right?
Yeah.
And I get that.
But I, and I think you bring up a really good point. I just want to um just in con- this data point is around the whole, the whole staff in that full day, um which is one approach and one way that professional learning is supported. But um I think what you're addressing too is that forty percent that maybe see themselves as having that skill, which um which is where the instructional coaches are so important, because they provide that personal line of one-on-one support. And so there's the full spectrum of um of support, whether the whole class, whole group, and then those individual one-on-one touch points with instructional coaches that can be students, that teachers that are way ahead of maybe where the whole group was was, or even student or teachers that were maybe need a little bit more support.
So this slide, and and I, and I, I think I've heard a different answer even than what I initially saw here. But the two items on the right, two, the two items on the left, the the ones and twos, that's about sixteen percent said, we, I didn't really learn that much. Um, and so is it, do we believe that's because they were already fairly proficient in in the topic?
It could be a variety of reasons, honestly. You know, um, it's great that eighty three percent felt that.
It is. No, and I'm not, and I, that is based on, I'm not trying to pick it apart. I'm being really good thinking here. You guys did great work. It's just, at some point, it's the other side that is, okay, well, and while they're happy, we did great work. What are these other folks doing, saying that this wasn't a daily pack? And they spent two days of training or a day of training, and how do we, uh, what was it that we we missed? And how do we, how do we bring that to, it it is, I I hear eighty six percent. And maybe if it was a wider scale, if people were more in the middle of the road, it wouldn't be that like sixteen percent said. That person day and.
You bring forward a good question that we could ask as a follow-up question, because I don't know the answer. In terms of, did that sixteen percent not learn anything new because they already are proficient? Or do they not learn anything new because we didn't teach to their, you know, we didn't teach them, they felt they needed to know or whatnot? I don't, I don't know that. That would be this suggestion and the follow-up question.
And I think that's where I was going with that. I didn't initially think you could have an answer ready. It was one of those things that we look at the data, it's like, oh, okay, so what do we begin with that? And so, uh, on. I think this I do on page thirty eight. And I think we talked about this. Again, the red under was about sixteen percent. The scale took high. This is the four. I think it was about the same, so I'm going to repeat probably. So, yeah, no, that was it. No, that was helpful. But I appreciate the uh the means put in there and uh. And then again, here's another one where I see two bell shaped curves, and you, who you moved the new look. And that was the, that's something to win, and I see it as a win and anything. But just looking at it a little differently, how do we then, just making sure we're getting the most out of the work for how the teachers spend a professional development day, how do we get the most out of it? Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Dr. Mitchell, can you give us the percentage or the number of teachers that attended the professional development?
Yes, very much so.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm in my eyes.
Yeah.
Uh, it's more of a comment than question, I guess. I guess it's a question too. Uh, on page twenty four, um, it says parent square, ninety eight percent. Are you SD families connected? But I need the percentage of the participation. I know we connected with them, but actually, um, you know, the participation that the parents have done. Uh, I know that sometimes they don't have the tools or the resources, but since you're connected, we have fifty percent, one fifty percent, this is a little um idea.
I think it might be helpful too to explain how parent square works because um I don't know which of you might want to to address that. Um, or we can see, we can get a follow-up as well. Because it's um, the the goal is getting them connected, like getting them to build an account, getting them logged in. And then we can push content to them. And so it's by text, by phone, by email. So they all do have one of those three tools. And so when I send out a letter, it goes out in those three ways. Um, and um and Gina Ward manages and helps support all of that. But our teachers can do it, our principals can do it, our staff can do it, pushing information out. So, you know, there was messages to be sent out to our seniors. Um, so we push all this information out by class, by grade, by location, by language preference, so that it can be disaggregated. But then you can also reply back. So I can see something as passive, like I can see that I've opened and I've read my text. But then I'm also able to send a message back. Um, if I just wipe that two-way conversation with my child's teacher um by using parent square. So the goal is that they are connected, that they have registered an account, get to register an account. And then that is, then we know that we're able to get information to them. Um, and we can certainly look, you can, sorry, go ahead, Brian, tell us more.
No, I just can, yes, exactly. And I'm just considering other engagement data we can pull, and I can get that for you that um has more more data on what the engagement has been like. Uh, but this is the percentage that are connected in one of those ways that Dr. Mitchell, which.
No, this is talking to me. I'm sorry.
And to what you said, it's been successful, is that, is that correct? Thank you.
It probably one of the number one thing that in the parent superintendent's uh advisory council, it's the number one thing where they've said double thumbs up. And in our LCAP conversation, double thumbs up. They really appreciate it because um as Ryan had explained, there were different platforms that parents would communicate on. Um, different ones of teachers, I'm sorry, that teachers would use. So as as Dr. Anderson said, if I had a few children in the district, I might be using three different platforms from now to one. So I'm able to see information that's there. Um, so they have been very appreciative of that. But we can get even more data in terms of how much two-way conversation's been going on, et cetera.
It is just to note the good possibility positivity of um parent square. And I, that really makes me feel that that is very important.
You, you all can register for parents for it too. It's obvious too. And so you can decide.
Anyone have any questions? Any more questions? Yeah, I have a little, one more question on the uh, on on the uh page sixteen that says we deliver a lot of books, the hundred fifty four thousand, go to K six, yeah, sixty one thousand books. So these are physical books we deliver to the kids. Um, my my question is, at the end of the year, most of these books will return to to school. Sorry, the high school textbooks return, certainly in before pandemics, no problem. And but now, be understanding the safety of the uh books, how how we should uh sanitize them or how when when it's the end of the year, they return to 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 stores.
And the the public health department sends the items that are returned, like they should sit idle um for twenty four hours. And so when once they're returned, and we did this at the end of last school year, school year as well, they sit and we we leave them.
They're in the warehouse?
No, they're at the school. So they're returned in bins of different, each school has a process of collecting thing. But they, we leave them, we accept them, sit.
I see. So it'd be probably, how do we do have the?
They have guidelines.
The guideline.
For, yeah, for books sent, or some paper, for books, for hard services, some hard services we can wipe down, but books they have to sit.
So twenty four hours, it's long enough for. Um, any more questions, anyone? Okay, and thank you very much for the support and the interest and the help of Reles for the excellent presentation. I want to thank you now, maybe uh, in the presentation, and 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 I want to thank you for the the the, you know, behind, you know, you be, you be, you be. Uh, you know, very.
I think it is definitely a team, my team, uh, the educational services team does a great job collaborating and um working with our teachers and our principals and our science staff, certified staff, everybody gets involved. Also, we also work collaboratively with administrative services, making the resources. So it really is a team. And we are very much supported by our board, and we appreciate that.
And the leadership.
But I'm just making sure.
Thank you, thank you very much. So we can move to the next slide. The next on discussion, action item and uh, resolution for number AS twenty twenty one. Thirteen, emergency, activation for a school safety project. So make a motion, and in the second, the top of the resolution, AS twenty twenty one, seven um thirteen, emergency activation for school safety project. Um, on the move.
A second.
And a second.
I just want to make one comment. This kind of follows up the resolution that we made back in March last year. Isn't it? Um, that with the situation of the pandemic, things changing constantly, day to day, sometimes hour to hour. You can't always call an emergency board meeting. And that in order to have an efficient orderly process and running a school district, sometimes we need to delegate our authority. And that's why this resolution is so important, when it enables Dr. Mitchell to run the school district and run the efficient party. And we can then review those actions at future board meetings.
And I would agree with that. We don't want to have to wait till next month to make a decision. We need to make a decision and move quickly on it. We like to have that ability. Just bring it back in, for us to.
Any motion? You know, move the book, move. Dr. Lewis?
Aye.
And this is others.
Aye.
David Melken?
Aye.
Kevin Nigas?
Aye.
Kevin, aye. No, motion, Kevin. The next one, we can now resume the joint meeting, I mean, the motion can, uh, let them to join the study session. If I speak this qualification. I will do. And this.
My second.
The last second. Look, again, and Dr. Lewis?
Aye.
And this is another side.
David Melken?
Aye.
Kevin Nigas?
Aye.
Kevin, aye. My dear, which helps to join, um, speak key. Thank you very much.